Call our meeting to order. It's our regularly scheduled meeting for June 13th. Tonight, we're going to be potentially finalizing next year's budget. We had a very, very late meeting last night. I think we left here, I don't know, it was 10:00 PM? Very, very interesting, very good discussions. So it's been a couple of good days of county government discussions, to say the least. Any announcements? Any announcements?
No.
Chester?
No, sir.
If we'll all rise, we'll observe a moment of silence and I'll ask Commissioner Beal to lead us in the pledge.
Please join me as we salute the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to have a, next item is a public hearing for the recommended fiscal year 2016-17, 2018 budget. We'll open the public hearing. It's like we have one person signed up to speak on the public comment period. Is there anyone else that would like to address us in regards to the fiscal year budget? Kurt?
If you have somebody that's signed up for public session to comment on the budget, it really should be done during this public hearing.
I agree. We have Kurt Volker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Kurt Volker. I'm a fairly new resident of Macon County. We bought here in 2004, but we're not official until a year ago February. We became full-time residents of the auto community. I've been involved in a lot of different things as a reporter, as a lobbyist, ran for county commission down in Florida. I stopped in, saw Derek when I first came here and met a number of you over the period of time and a couple of you just recently. I'm very impressed with the overall system you have here. I've seen a lot of governments being very successful, some of them not so successful. And I would like to comment, first of all, about the public library system you have here. I volunteered for a library down in Broward County for a number of years and the Learn and Read program and other programs that offer services to the public. And speaking to Karen Wallace, your director, as well as the regional director, I can't say enough about the types of programs and facilities that are offered to the general public. I know funding is a big issue and I know there's not a lot of dollars available. I don't think there's any increase in the library budget this year for her, but I would strongly suggest that you look at that in the future and consider perhaps some additional funding for publications and media support, because Karen asked me and I had to decline. I couldn't do the newsletter for her because I'm just so involved in not only my own retirement, I've been busier than I've ever been, but that other things just don't allow me to do at this time. I think they're really doing a tremendous job. I watched the facility being built. The other thing is parks. As a former park manager down in Florida, I manage a regional system that has as many employees as you do here in your county, 55 people, involved with a nature center, a beach park, and a water feature park. I would have loved to seen that community center built next to the library as planned, but that didn't work out. And I think in order to compete as this county grows, which I envision, and looking at the increase in the building permits, I think it was like 20% last year increase, I see nothing but growth as it merges from Asheville into Waynesville and eventually into Franklin. I think this county has an awful lot to offer for a lot of people, particularly those of my age. I'll be 75 in November, 39 in my mind. Some of the brain cells are slowly going away, but I try to keep up to date on as many things as I can. Attended a broadband meeting yesterday. Commissioner Shields was there and I think that's a great opportunity for this county to increase their economic capabilities because it is absolutely critical to this region in furthering population growth and also for services, for everything from library services, live streaming for healthcare. It's amazing what they can do now with broadband service in diagnostic work for people that are homebound. You virtually can stay in your home and be diagnosed by a doctor and if services are required, 911 and they're there. I've only used the facilities here at Angel once. Yeah, I had to go to Mission to have a heart valve repaired. I inherited my mom's mitral valve prolapse and the doctors said if you don't do it within seven years, you'll be dead. That was in 2009. Successful surgery, it was repaired, broke all the records at Angel. And I'm still here today and very thankful that I have an opportunity to participate in this community. So I just wanted to commend everyone I've talked to in county government. You've got a great young man here. I've done what he's done in Florida and I know how difficult it is to work with a body of elected officials from time to time. We had seven county commissioners that I had to deal with on a daily basis and then the state legislature as well and Congress. So you've got a real challenge ahead of you and I hope, I wish Mark Meadows would show up a little bit more than he does, because I know a lot of you, and I in particular, would like to talk to him about some issues that I think are critical to this county and this region. So just general comments. I'm reporting for the Smoky Mountain News, so I'll take my hat off and put on my reporter hat and hopefully do a good job for Smoky Mountain News while Jesse Stone is taking a much-needed vacation. So thank you for the opportunity to talk to you and I look forward to working with all of you. As long as God wants me here in the source, I'll be available to maybe do some volunteer work for the county, maybe for the library, Karen, and anything else that I can help this community, which I really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. We're happy to have you in Macon County. Anyone else that would like to address the board in regards to the budget?
It might be appropriate for you to, just for the benefit of those that are here today, remind them what the budget ordinance calls for in the way of dollars and basic details as far as tax rates and those sorts of things.
Let our county manager do that.
Or I'd like to refer to the county manager.
Chairman Tate, don't you have me on the board?
Your own public comment, but not on the budget. Are you going to address us about the budget?
I thought I'd sign specifically the budget signing, not the public comment.
I may have this wrong. You are correct, Norrell. My mistake. They look almost identical. Okay, go ahead. County manager will lead to that. That's my fault.
Now you know why I was confused.
We'll all remember this moment. It may be the only time.
No, no, no. About the 33rd time today. I won't tell you about the 34th. Go ahead, Derek.
The fiscal year budget as recommended for fiscal year 1718 is $49,587,927 with revenues and expenditures being balanced. This is representative of an add-on property tax rate of 34.9 cents per $100 of assessed value. This add-on tax rate is flat from fiscal year 1617. In this budget, represents no increase to the tax rate here in Macon County. We do have some increases that were discussed and discussed further last night that are also included in this budget ordinance in the way of fire taxes. The town of Franklin requested a one cent increase to their tax rate of 54.5 cents per $100 of assessed value with an estimated valuation of $1,538,197,288. This will generate a levy of $818,449. The second increase with respect to the volunteer fire departments was Burnington Iola with a tax rate increase as recommended to 10.09 cents per $100 of assessed valuation with an estimated valuation in the Burnington Fire District of $217,72,617. This will generate a levy of $213,835. These, the tax collection rates for the fire district as well as the operating budget at 34.9 cents, that is a tax collection rate of 98.67 percent.
Couldn't have done a better one.
98.18, sorry.
The fire districts is 97.6.
And 97.63.
All right. Just if I can get this straight this time. Ms. Norrell Carplum, she's first on our list.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, in deference to Mr. Gillespie, who has only met me once, someone like Mr. Beal has suffered through my hearing some 15 years. But you will recall that in January or February, I pled fairly strenuously for the good of the Greenway. And I was surprised that three people, after the meeting closed that day, came up and thanked me for speaking and then two called later the next day. So there really is a lot of interest and support in having the Greenway up to snuff. Right now, there are, at that time, you will recall, I enumerated several instances where there is just gravel and the pathway is deteriorating. There is one section at Fox Ridge where the track hoe ground the surface very badly and those little holes are all still there that can trip people. And then on the southern section, there are three parts that are just gravel. And I am strenuously urging that you include in this year's budget the ability to completely repave, completely pave over the unfinished sections and do the repairs that are necessary. And to my dismay, our newspapers, which are excellent in their coverage, talked about the highlights of what you accomplished last year, then the budget you just mentioned in very good detail, an item about Wesley's Park being, the repairs being undertaken and completed. And the last one, then, this very major thing with the capital improvements, which of course is going to go into the future, but none of these talked about the Greenway being repaired. So I'm here tonight to confirm that that's something very important for you to include in the budget. Some of you may know that I was a founding member of Macon Pride, the recycling education. I am well-known for having made this movie about the Peaks Creek disaster and raising funds for them. I've also worked on the Appalachian Trail and keeping part of that cleared until I got paralyzed two years ago. Many of you do not know or may have forgotten that I was one of the original 15 that helped install Wesley Park after that child's death. And I had occasion to work right alongside of Hank Schuler and another terrific person was the former president of Macon Bank. He had just left that and was going over to join the new Nantahela Bank. So I knew about him, but he worked alongside me in bib overalls, a straw hat. I don't remember whether he had a corn cob pipe, but he was very, very self-effacing. And it taught me a lesson that here, people of major caliber and ability, they get right alongside and do what has to be done for the good of the citizens. So I was careful not to talk about my background. But unfortunately, there's a very smooth commissioner among you today who I had a conversation with this afternoon and he did, made some very complimentary remarks and caused me to reveal that for 30 years, I was a member of the Pennsylvania Bar, practiced law in Philadelphia. And as a matter of fact, the last thing I did was to chair an arbitration hearing and then I got in my car and moved down here. So that's something that's very much a part of my past and I'm urging you, please, don't let me reveal how I can bring injunctions and class actions and sue the county for, it wouldn't be negligence, but failing to keep up the Greenway. Let me keep that part of me under wraps and undertake to restore the Greenway to its full flavor.
Kathy Tinsley? Kathy, sorry for my confusion there. Sorry for my confusion. I saw you raising your hand. I like your name's here, but it's on the wrong list.
That's all right. I've not done.
You know what I was wrong all along?
I've not done much of this. I'm Kathy Tinsley. Couple of years ago, I was put on the Macon County Library Board and as such, I feel like you're, part of your duty is to advocate for the boards you're on. I was happy to go onto that board because I have so many good memories of Fontana Bookmobile coming to school and getting picked by the teacher to go get books and have watched the library grow from town to where the senior citizen is and center is and out to where it is now. And it's been incredible to see the usage of that library increase. As a former educator, I had even thought where it's located now in terms of Macon Early College and Southwestern, it's become the unofficial library of those institutions, at least our branch here in Franklin has. So I know it's important in that sense. It's also really important for just the lifelong learning that goes on. I've been privileged to be in the library and seen just a huge demographic come in and use that and the comments that people have never seen it before that come in and are so taken with it. It's an incredible resource for us economically and it draws, I do believe it draws people. The other soft spot I have is for the library in Nantahela. I was privileged to get to teach there four years before I came to the high school. And what I, I just have an affinity for that place. That little library needs a lot of work. And I guess it's kind of the, if you build it, they will come mentality. I think a library, an improved library over there could really help that little community. So again, for what it's worth, thank you all for what you do. I can't imagine working with figures like you work with and I'm grateful to you. But I do, as we go forward, no matter what happens with this budget, if you could just keep us in mind with the library, I think it'd be a good return on our money. Thank you.
Annette? I'm going to let you help me out with your last name, I'm sorry.
Floriani.
Floriani, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for all you do for the community. I'm here to speak for the library. I've been volunteering for years with the library repairing books and keeping them in circulation so that we don't have to throw them out and buy new books. We save lots of lives that way, book lives. I also work with Friends of the Library Bookstore. I'm past president of the Friends of the Library. And I can tell you that if it weren't for the Friends of the Library helping augment the library funding, you wouldn't, we wouldn't see some of the programming and books in circulation and all of the things that the library does for this community. And it is just of primary importance to a community to have a good resource for, especially for our children. If we don't invest in our children, we don't have a future. And if we don't have the library for those children and those early reading programs and the Bookmobile and all of those extra programs and teaching children to read young, we're really doing our children a disservice. It is also extremely important for those people who don't have broadband and need to come and use the library for that purpose to help with employment. There are just so many services that I don't think many people understand are there. It isn't just checking out books anymore. So please keep the library in mind during your budgeting processes. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board in regards to the budget? Going once, going twice?
I certainly second what she said, what they said about the library.
I'll respond to that real quick. I think this board, although we haven't shown an increase for the library in the past, I believe, five years, correct? I think this board showed a dedication to the library and the fact that if you look on a per capita basis of what this county gives and on a percentage basis, it's a lot greater than most of the counties in North Carolina. And are you disagreeing with me? I see you showing some information.
No, we're looking at the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought I saw you shake your head and were disagreeing with my remarks there. So but based upon the testimony we've seen, I think this board showed a good faith effort to support our libraries. Again, a lot greater than what the majority of the counties in North Carolina do, especially on a per capita basis. Any other comments? We need to close the public hearing.
I think you might want to give each of your commissioners an opportunity to speak anything on their mind concerning the budget process and then redo the opportunity for further public comment, if any, and then you can close.
Paul?
I was old comment.
I'm going to bounce back and forth. Mr. Shields?
We spoke last night.
Mr. Gillespie? Mr. Beal? I have one question, just from our county manager. If you can give us, did you have a chance to meet Mr. Bruttner today? Can you give us an update? If you did?
Did not have a chance to meet Mr. Bruttner today, but am supposed to meet with him on Friday regarding some other matters. He and I did talk as we spoke yesterday and I'm assuming that's in regards to the cleaning prep position requested. And I think, you know, we got a consensus, I felt like last night, that if that indeed is a priority of the Health Board moving forward to work with Mr. Bruttner and his budget to find the needed funds or to make arrangements to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish and what the Health Board deems the appropriate gold standard for those clinical rooms. So we will be able to work together and I feel confident we'll be able to work together to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I did speak with Mr. Bruttner today about that issue and encouraged him to get with Mr. Rowland. He indicated he would do so. I encouraged him to find a solution. He indicated they would do so.
Okay, good. Paul? Sorry for me to keep my mouth shut and I don't know if we'll have action on the budget in that or not. And if so, all of you here, if we do it later and you're not here, we do appreciate your input. It's kind of disappointing, there's only three people who's willing to come and speak up when we're charged with spending over $50 million of your taxpayer money. There'll be discussions from now on about how we do that, is effective or not, but I do appreciate public input. And please always feel that the door's open and nothing we do in this room is personal. It's, we try to be professional about it. And I do thank each of you coming and speaking. We should have brought some company with you, but thanks for coming. Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Anybody good? Commissioners? Manager?
It's just always an honor to do this every year, working with the different organizations and department heads and putting this budget together. It just never ceases to amaze me, the level of public service and the true hearts that public servants out there that are helping to formulate this number, these numbers and make this budget work. We're truly blessed to live in an area that places such high value on public service.
You may leave. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and we're going to move to the next agenda item, which is public comment. Mr. Volker, I think you've already expressed your comments and we'll take it under our public session. If you'd like to address this again, you've signed up.
Just one initial item made me think about the Greenway. What would you approach there?
I helped develop a Greenway system in Broward County as well. And I noticed just recently, when we're going over the wooden, the wooden bridge, I forget what, what's the wooden bridge, the name of the wooden bridge that you cross?
Might be Cassie.
Yeah, I think it is. Have you noticed that the carpenter bees have almost eaten that thing apart? If you look, if you look closely, and the carpenter bees are something we have to live with. We live with them at our house all the time. I figured out a way to control them and I'd be glad to share it with you. But if you, if you walk across a bridge and you look at the outside of the beam, the trusses that go across, you'll notice that the thing looks like Swiss cheese. And I don't know who's responsible for maintaining that, but if something is not done to that very shortly, that bridge will be, will not be there anymore. So maybe whoever might be interested in that could go out and take a look and do an assessment and see what it takes to figure out how to control that because they can literally destroy your home.
Mr. Manager, get off my hunch. Just a last look into it.
I'll look. I'd be glad to show you where that is, Derek.
Oh, yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Okay.
We'll definitely look into it. And I do think, you know, speaking with what Norrell had said and mentioned the capital improvement plan, I do think that it would be an excellent vehicle moving forward to incorporate kind of all these needed improvements at the Greenway into that capital improvement plan if it be deemed a priority by the board and those working on that plan to get that incorporated in there.
And you need to remember why the Greenway exists. It's Duke Power. That's why the Greenway is ours, for them to access the power line. So we had that discussion, we're going to have, continue to have discussion with Duke Power. That's why the Greenway is ours. If you go back in history to find out why the Greenway is ours, it's because of Duke Power to access the power line. So they have more, you know, they have, it benefits, certainly benefits us, but it certainly benefits them also. And they, we have reminded them of that and we'll do that again, so.
Each of you will get a blueberry pie tomorrow.
Promises, promises.
Anybody else like to address the board? We'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to additions to the agenda. Just from what I've been gathering, it looks like we might want to add just a quick discussion about the burn building and we'll add that as 10B under Old Business. If the board so desires, we'll go ahead and put our budget on the agenda for tonight. I presume that can come under Old Business, which we've been discussing, we need to go under New.
Yes.
Old Business.
I think I would categorize it as New Business because what you'd be doing tonight is discussing the adoption of the actual budget.
Okay, let's move it to 10E. There's an elephant. 10E.
11.
11E, sorry. I'm on my game tonight, aren't I? Eleven E, sorry. Oh, my game tonight, Arby. Is there anything else? Commissioner Shields, Commissioner Bill, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
No, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I have two things, Mr. Chairman. One is I, I passed out a resolution that we'd be asking for support from my colleagues tonight. And this is about the funding cuts through the legislature for the mental health, intellectual development, disabilities and substance abuses going through the legislature now. It started out in the scene at sixty-nine million, which is reoccurring for this year, and a hundred million reoccurring next year. Now, the House budget improves that sum. What that means to, to the West is about five million dollars that, that we certainly need for lots of reasons and, and substance abuse and mental health services. So this is a, this is a resolution's been passed by the, by the far west counties. And, and I'd asked, this is about everything from opiate reversal kits to the Boston Center to a lot of things it's going to impact. So we just, the cut is just, in this, in this time, we hear a lot of talk about stuff. So we'd ask for support of this resolution. It's been passed out. Hope y'all have had a chance to read it. Also, Tommy Jenkins is here tonight to talk about the Nacquasi Initiative. That's as you enter, as you enter Franklin and hope you had a chance to read over what I passed out about the Nacquasi Initiative. Tommy is here and we'll be asking for some support on that, Mr. Chairman. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's add, the resolution is ten F and the Nacquasi Initiative, excuse me, eleven F. Thank you. And the Nacquasi Initiative is eleven G.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We would like to replace eleven A, or excuse me, ten, it's contagious. Ten A, paving and landscaping at the Robert C. Carpenter Community Building. Won't be discussing that tonight, finalized some information. But we do have Mr. Jack Morgan and Mr. Tom Ritter here with us tonight and they'll be happy to give this board an update in terms of the building construction.
Okay, so we'll change that to?
Just a?
Just do an update?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tommy Jenkins is here this evening. He has a new prospective tenant for one of the units at the Business Development Center. He contacted me late last week about trying to get together a lease and decision agreement in connection with ending whatever arrangement there is for that unit presently and entering into a new lease arrangement with that prospective tenant. I have the paperwork prepared. I'll distribute that to each of you at the break or whenever is appropriate. But he'll be here and can address the board on those matters.
So do we want to add that as eleven H? Eleven H?
Got a resolution and a resolution?
Yes. No. You got a motion to approve the agenda?
Most definitely, Mr. Chairman.
Motion second. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Reports and presentations. Old Business update of the Robert C. Carpenter Community Building. Long down, the next contestant on the prices.
All right. I hope the price is right. Anyway, as Tom could attest to, we've made quite a bit of progress out there. We're slow getting started because of our hiccups with our bids, but we've gaining ground on it. Actually, we're gonna start, the biggest log jam we've had was the time delay for the windows and the metal to encase the windows and doors that we're replacing. The lead time on that was six weeks and there's gonna start tomorrow on the window replacement. So that's great. That was a long wait and a painful wait. But the gym is beautiful.
It is, yeah.
It is beautiful. I'd advise each and every one of you commissioners, if you've not had an opportunity to come and see our gym, come and see it because we're gonna be the envy of most everybody in western North Carolina with that gymnasium. Took, took quite a bit of time and energy and resources to do it. I understand that, but it's, I think it's, you'll find that it's well worth it. The, the gym is completed with the exception of the windows. The flooring is completed, the, all the layout for all the courts is completed. The walls are painted, the ceiling's painted, the lights have been changed out. The new socks for the heat that don't scare you to death when they pop, when they come on. So that's completed. We got to, all we have left to do there, I reckon, is reattach the bleachers to the wall and give them a cleaning. And that's about it in there. The bathrooms, all the plumbing's done with the exception of setting the fixtures, all the refins is done. The tile work should be completed, the wall and floor tile in the bathrooms this week. So hopefully the plumber can come in sometime next week to start setting plumbing fixtures. That will not include the lavatories this time because the countertops won't be here till the twenty-ninth. So he'll have to set the countertops and then drop his sinks in before he can complete that. The, all the lighting has been changed out to energy-efficient LED throughout the building, which is a plus. The offices for the staff at the community building and the recreation park are completed. We painted and re-carpeted those. They moved back into those now. So, and we've got two coats of paint, almost everything we got to paint on the exterior walls and the interior walls as well, with the exception of the business center. We still got some drywall to finish. Let's see what else. The Guy Taylor Memorial thing has been, it's in place now inside. It looks very nice. I think Guy would have enjoyed that. The attendance office got its second coat of paint today. We're ready for the tile floor, not the tile, but the vinyl tile in that area. So we're moving right along. In all actuality, if everything falls into place, the interior should be done by the fourth, but not the exterior. The exterior, trying to get the landscaping together and that's been a little bit of a problem. And we don't want to pave, repave the parking lot until we do get the landscaping done. So that's the reason Mr. Rowland has asked for us not to consider that tonight.
The biggest thing that we run into is the big building is moving this stuff around. The stuff we're putting in there is large. There is a boatload of floor tile going from one spot to another. And it's so big, so heavy, you can't just stack it to the ceiling. So every room, every hallway has been filled with stuff until you can get it moved out of the way so that the guys can come here and do what they're doing in between. So we've got the protection mats here for the gymnasium. So we will have the capability of putting those protection mats down so it won't hurt the, the wood flooring at all. And that gives us an opportunity to put something in there, even a rolling scaffold for the guy to do the windows, whatever he would need to do. County staff needs to learn how to use the mats and how to put them down and how to sequence their installation. So it will be a learning process for them as well as something that allows us to move some of the lighter weight stuff out of the way and give the people the room to work.
When you mean the interior, you mean the building renovation project itself?
Inside the structure. The stucco, we've not had enough days that it's not rained to get the stucco on. So that's the exterior. It's not completed at this time. Are negotiating with someone about painting the little ribbons. And the roof's on the, the extension there. So for the most part, it's done. We just gotta get the stucco and the paint on that. And the weather's got to help us out a little bit for that.
Great.
Yeah, I think that Macon County can really be proud of that when it's completed.
With all that being said, being good there, have you heard any kind of updates on the red light there for the exit?
Uh, yeah, they came and core drill for the placement of those posts last week, early part of last week. There's gonna be, there'll have to be four posts for the traffic lights. There'll be one in our yard on that [inaudible]. There'll be one on the left of our driveway facing four forty-one on that, where the dogwood trees were. We had to remove one of the dogwood trees for that. Then there'll be two posts on the other side. So they're getting the grading down and the traffic light people said that they would have to wait till Ingalls had the curb and gutter down before they could install their post. And they're coming around from the rear side with the curb and gutter. So they're headed that way.
Are we gonna be lined up on exit and entrance?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have two egress lanes off the property and one with, I think we're still shooting for the decel lane.
Yeah.
A decel lane and one ingress coming from northbound four forty-one. So the DOT has been extremely cooperative. Even the people with Ingalls has been, have been wonderful to work with what we're trying to do now to anticipate what they're going to be doing when they get around doing the four forty-one revisions.
Is that working again?
With those revisions, they're actually going to do that decel lane and improve our, improve our entrance into the building there to make for a safer entrance in and out of there. And that red light will help as well. So it's gonna be a newly renovated and safer facility as well. I think it'll be safe to say.
It will be.
You won't drag your bottom of your car number?
I hope not.
Another request I could take.
You got, need to get a hard truck. Yeah.
It might be, it might be a little.
Anyway, the DOT has been very cooperative in working with this. And I cannot say for certainty, but I don't believe this, the improvements to the driveway entrance is gonna cost the county anything. And Ingalls has been an excellent neighbor because Derek and I went and sat down with, with their chief and to discuss the red light. And it was as easy to discuss it with him as it was to discuss this with you gentlemen. So they said, yeah, that's fine. We'll adjust. It'll work. You can use their traffic light, so.
All right, gentlemen, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you so much.
I can call out why you talked to your [inaudible].
Just a quick discussion on the burn building. You don't have to come up, you can say, unless you want to speak to us about it. But just real quickly, I think this board's ready to take some action and move forward. We just, I don't know if we need to sit down again. I'm not sure of your suggestions on where y'all stand. I don't know if we're waiting on anything else or?
I, I think the college is waiting on approval for us to start moving forward with the support of the county and just speaking on what I spoke with Dr. Thomas about so that we can start looking at architects and those type things to come in and get some plans drawn up. So we can get some more firm figures to be able to bring for the board so we kind of know where we're at with everything in that as well, too. So we appreciate support and everything, too. The, we are now searching for a new fire rescue training coordinator. Mr. McKinnon accepted a position with the Air Force full-time as a firefighter. So he's going active military and he leaves next week. So right now, we've got a, a part-time person filling that position until we can replace that.
Take it, Curtis, in what you showed us before about the prefab is down the road or is that?
Yes, yeah, we, we made contact with them and they, they said it would be the percentage about what we're looking at as far as price increases as everything else was going to.
Do you need an engineer for that or architect?
Well, we'll need, we'll need one for the, I guess, the site and the lines and everything that we have to have, hydrants and that stuff, too. I think as, as far as the community college system goes, we're required to send the plans in to them to be approved.
Take it.
Yes, sir. Before we can move forward with, with anything on that. Everything has an approval process, but it's gonna be a timely manner. I think it's a three-month process before we can get that going. So, you know, we're looking down the road before we can get those plans up and going. Once we get approval, stay a little, move a little bit quicker. But then it's the bid process and everything else for the groundwork and all that as well.
Thank you, Curtis. Any other questions?
Sure.
Mr. Manager, do we have enough information to provide a surveyor with the area to be surveyed and, and marked off for this project?
I think, I think we do. I think, just as we had spoken last night, I think that the next step here is to sit down with Dr. Thomas, Curtis, and get a, get a building envelope there and then let this toward.
Just want to make sure everybody's on the same page about?
And simultaneously revise the, I guess, revisions to the MOU.
Right.
Are in order as well. So I, I think that's the next step and then we can move forward.
Because the survey will have to have done, then the appraisal before we can move forward, too. So there's a lot of steps.
But if prices keep doing this, Curtis, you need to, I think we're ready to, I think this board is pretty good. I mean, you got two board members here.
I'm ready to.
And I think we have a proposal that we, we'd like to present forward.
Okay.
At the proper time.
Right. I'll do everything I can to make this a top priority for my.
You got your plate full anyway.
Yes, sir.
Even fuller now, it sounds like.
It is. It's been busy, but we're blessed to.
Will that plate, will that position be filled? I'm just curious.
Um, we got it advertised for two weeks. Then we'll review applications and go from there, too, as well. So we've got some good candidates that have applied as well. So we're looking forward to that. So thanks, Jim. Thanks.
So who'll contact who?
I'll reach out to Dr. Thomas and have that information back before this board at our July meeting.
Sounds good.
And the two board members, I want to see what the, the preliminary is taking out out there.
I was gonna say, if you, if you got, if you got enough information after meeting with Dr. Thomas to proceed with the survey, you may want to authorize your county manager to go ahead and get that started, get that moved. Yeah, and you, with a little bit of luck, might be able to be completed by the July.
Like we talked about last night, and everybody agrees, the location of this building is really important because of track of that land. So, and I think Curtis agrees with that.
Uh, no, we're gonna have to, we're not meeting a meeting threshold. And if we'll be able to find the funds, I think we've got some money left in HR and we're not, I'm sure. We will, we'll get those funds, get that taken care of.
So we need to authorize that?
I think it would be appropriate to authorize.
I'll make it motion to authorize the county manager to proceed with contacting the president of SEC along with whoever he sees fit as, as part of board members in proceeding with the survey and, and providing the expenses necessary.
Okay.
You want to also do the appraisal?
That'd be part of the expenses necessary.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good addition to, to include it because if the survey's done, once they have that, the appraisal can proceed. And it may make sense to go ahead and line up a space for the appraiser to work on this just as quick as that.
Don't have to.
The survey's completed.
Excuse me, excuse me. Don't have to, to appraisal, but we have to have an appraisal and then they have to have an appraisal.
Yes, sir. I believe that was how, that was how the last piece worked. And I think SEC, we got the survey and I think SEC got an appraisal on that piece of property. And we did not get an appraisal. So we'll go ahead and get an appraisal and I'll, I'll speak with Don Thomas about SEC and then move forward with the appraisal as well.
They all [inaudible].
Yes, but it's for a different piece of property.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proceed ahead, Mr. Manager. We're gonna move on to new business. Request for proposals of scrap tire recycling. I think our solid waste director, Mr. Cristall, is traveling. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's only one proposal. I think he's recommending that proposal submitted in request to the request proposal that was advertised. He did have a few concerns about the proposal submitted. This was something that wasn't by statute required to be advertised and put out for bid, but he chose and recommended it, that it be handled that way. I think that was a good idea. But there was only one proposal in response. He has a few concerns about it, some things that appears to me would need to be negotiated by the county. I think his recommendation is to proceed forward with that subject to himself and, and myself being happy with the, those negotiations. My thought is, is we may be able to bring this back to you at the July meeting for an actual. an actual approval of a contract. I suspect it would probably take that length of time to, to get it done.
If my memory serves me correctly, I think we did the same contract with the same company last year.
What we did is a, sort of a temporary contract, because our, our provider for those services actually was purchased by this company, and we needed something to get to this point. This is, will be a longer-term arrangement, I think this will be, I believe it's a one-year with two renewal options, and there, there were some things that Mr. Stahl wanted myself and him to work out with the provider before the contract is signed. Different people price things differently, I think one of his big concerns was the, the price on the surface was what he felt to be a very good price, but there's a diesel fuel surcharge, and you've got to do a few calculations to see how that's, how much that's going to run up, and I think it starts off at about thirty cents, so it could be substantial.
What do you have to go for? What, what do you need?
I think just a, just a consensus to move forward or authority to move forward in the negotiation of a proposed contract with this authorized.
With the county manager and Chris to move forward?
Yes.
Got a motion on?
I'll make a motion.
We even know if we need a motion, it's a consensus, correct?
You need a motion for that, or?
I, I, I think a consensus is, would be enough, because we're not really approving anything from the standpoint of contractual matter.
Sounds good. Item 10B, request for fireworks displays for Nantahala and Franklin.
Motion to approve all requirements for meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion on the floor.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Gillespie, all in favor?
Aye.
Finance Department, do we need to go through each one of these individual capital project ordinance amendment for Union Academy and Highland School?
Well, I was going to kind of talk about them in bulk, if that's okay, since there's eleven of them.
If we can approve them in bulk, I'm, I'm great with that.
Items one through eight and then item 11 are all basically end-of-year cleanup items, you know, that capture amendments that have happened through the year and then like year-end cleanup. Item number nine, the Governor's Highway Safety Program grant, the Sheriff's Department has made application for that, the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred, and the county would have to match that amount. And that is already plugged in next year's budget, but they need this resolution so they can move forward with that application process. And then item number 10 is a change order relative to the Carpenter Community Building for airwood construction in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And the change order says it's for new tile in both restrooms from back shower wall to entrance seven foot high. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I've had a chance to review them and they all looked appropriate to me, so I'm, I'm good.
I've got one question on the, on the. Weatherization program, the direct reimbursement?
Yes.
Is that the same thing we got last year?
That is, it's fifty thousand dollars that at some point earlier in this fiscal year, John received from the Duke Energy.
So this is not new money we just have there?
It's just the ordinance, that's why I said a lot of it's cleanup.
I hope it's new money.
No, none of this is, no, none of those for John.
So this is just, this is the money, I think this come in last April.
I can't remember the exact.
Yeah, I think it come in March or April. This is not new money that just happened to fall out of the.
No, it's not new money. But it's money, he still has a good bit of it available, if he hasn't, at the time, hasn't expired to use it, but.
It's got so many, it's got so many strange effects, it ain't like regular weatherization money. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve items one through 11.
Motion made.
Got a motion to approve, second by Commissioner Shields, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Item 11D, scheduled date establishing hearing of appeal for order entered against Mr. Wayne Moss under the flood ordinance of Macon County, County Attorney Mr. Chester James.
Just briefly, there's a requirement for this board to hold quasi-judicial hearing to accommodate Mr. Moss's appeal from a order that was entered by Jack Morgan, our administrator of this particular ordinance. I would recommend that the date be set for your July 11 hearing and that this board authorize myself and Mr. Morgan to issue the, actually, it'd be the clerk to the board, Mr. Rowland, to issue a notice of hearing to Mr. Moss to give him a notice to come in on the 11th of July at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, right here. Board to get a motion to.
So make.
A motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I'll have to brush up my, my judgeship. Item 11E, the budget ordinance. I think. There you go.
Save the trees, you can all just pass those down, please, sir. Your store copies for the press, I might be one short, sorry.
If you, if you need additional, you can have that. Brittany?
Chester. You gave me to make another copy.
I think that's the rest of that. Or just? Yeah. I don't think I've ever asked for this, but I'm going to ask for about two minutes of quiet time here, so I can review these numbers and look over it, so.
If I could just make a statement.
Sure, Laura, go ahead.
So the ordinance that was passed out to you reflects the numbers as presented, the county manager presented on May 16th. With the exception of this one-page worksheet, that shows the numbers that have been changed in the budget ordinance. And of course, one is due to the Franklin fire tax increase and the Burnington fire tax increase. And then the second change that had to be made was in the E911 fund. A few months ago, we received a funding allocation letter, but since then, about two weeks ago, we received a revised number, which was a decrease in funding, so the budget ordinance reflects that as well.
Thank you, Laura. Again, I'm sorry, I'm going to need just a couple minutes to review these numbers.
Go ahead and sign it, Jenny, get it on, almost there, last page. I wish I had printed that out.
You've got a trust.
Uh?
Said you got a trust.
Well, I was going to get you that percentage, it's only a part.
Anybody need any more time to review?
I'm good, sir.
Okay. I'll go to the Chair and entertain a motion to approve the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2017, 2018 as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve, second, any further discussion?
Any particular order?
Go ahead.
Oh, compliments to the county manager and to Lori and other staff that were involved in putting together this document. Many hours, a lot of late hours, a lot of hard nights, and I think y'all put together a, a package that the county manager had justified to me in some previous conversations he and I had. And I, I do truly appreciate the exceptional amount of work. And we're sitting here tonight just voting on this one particular document, I might have some concerns about it, I'm not happy when our budget continues to grow, and I know a lot of that's in our, just governmental transfer funds and, and pass-throughs that skew the total amount, but I don't like to see these budgets grow, in the past four years I've been on this board, they've grown every year. That's not a direct reflection on the manager or his staff, but next year, I hope we can work on the total number. I, I forewarned Mr. Rowland that we had robust debate last night on a couple of fire districts that in my personal opinion and professional opinion had requested and was approved excessive tax increases in two districts being Burnington, Iowa and Franklin. And I, we had a good debate about it and I appreciate that and no personal feelings involved there. And I adamantly opposed then, tonight, and forever, anything that comes before us at a twenty to twenty-two percent tax increase, for whatever reason it may be. I voted against those same as a minority in the board. And I laid there last night after we got home, I guess we all feel like we've been in a wrestling match, but that's part of the, that's what we're, what we choose to do sitting here. One other note is, I appreciate the county manager being able to withstand everything, he sat there for two nights and been bombarded with every, from every angle on justifying his actions, his numbers. You lost all this board in a couple of those discussions, and I'll confess to that, and I appreciate your defense of what you presented. The war included, it's a team, team effort. But again, last night, I voted against these two excessive tax increases and I was torn last night and this morning, how did I go in there and vote against something and then come back and since the fire budget is in the total budget package, I cannot come today and vote for something I proposed last night. With that being said, I will vote against this budget in its entirety. Not any particular thing that Mr. Rowland has presented, he did not present this fire increase, it was not his request. Again, I'm adamant that we, I am not opposed to fire departments, I appreciate the service they offer, and I was at one time a member of the Burnington, Iowa Fire Department. I think it is high time that we get Warren Cave in here, we have this needed meeting of instilling some consistency in fire departments' funding and that this board tries to adopt some analytical procedure for determining how we fund county fire departments with taxpayer dollars. And with those brief notes, I would do plan to vote in opposition to tonight's budget request. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Um, I'd like to echo some of what was just said. I think county manager and, and the county staff as well as what's considered outside entities that submit budget requests, they answered a lot of questions, some on the spot, some they had opportunity to do a little research, but I think, I think that, I think that we've been pretty thorough in going through this as, as a group. And I, I had to go back, unlike Paul, I didn't go home, just go to bed, relax, but when I, I had to go back last night and, and kind of read through some of the, some of the commitments that I made to the citizens of Macon County when I ran for this position. And, and some of the things that, that, that I felt like were important to me then are still just as important. And I'm going to, I'm going to, my vote tonight is going to be a reflection on, on those, those items that, that I talked about for a year, sitting on that side of the bench. And, and, and I'm going to hold true to, to what I said that I would do.
Commissioner Shields?
Appreciate all the work that's put into it. I think it's been well spoken to, and appreciate all the work.
Good, Commissioner Bell?
Well, we live in progressive county, you can live in progressive county, you can vote against the budget, you can do whatever you want to do. We live in a progressive county, we can, we can stay, we can stay this way or we can be progressive. The reason the budget went up, there are a lot of reasons, if you read the budget. And the thing we've achieved as, as a board and as a county, and mostly by the citizens of this county. We've done this by maintaining a level tax base. As far as the fire departments go, is that an excessive rate hike, I don't know. But I do know that there's still the best deal that we have in the counties, and we'll continue to do so, I think, with the task force being. But I do know that there's still the best deal that we have in the counties, and we'll continue to do so, I think, with the task force being formed. I do agree with Paul that, and have for many, many years. It's come a long way, believe it or not, Paul, since you came on this board. It's got a long way to go. But I think it's a good budget for this county. I think it shows that, that we're looking forward, that we're providing more citizens for the county. Services for the citizens as they see fit, and uh, because we are a, and, and I think the citizens expect us to be a progressive board. And that's the reason I will certainly overwhelmingly support this budget. And I think it's a great budget, and I thank the county manager, Lori, and everybody that worked on this budget, done a great job. And uh, and don't be surprised if the budget goes up if you look back. My time coming on this board, it has increased every year as your budget has at your house. As everybody's budget has everywhere. And ours increased at, at a nominal rate over time, as all budgets have, and I think as far as I'm concerned, speaking for myself, is the things I voted on is things that I think is to support this county as we move forward. Some things that I wish we could have done, that maybe we didn't put enough money into. We can in the future, and I hope so, but I think overall it's, it's a good budget. It shows that we're a progressive county moving forward, Mr. Chairman, and providing citizens with the services and improving those services. So, uh, great budget, be glad to support this budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. Derek, I want to start off by congratulating you on putting together a, another successful budget. This board, community, department heads, fellow employees have thrown a lot of darts at you. And I think you've defended them well in your remarks and where you've come. It's not, I've tried to put myself in your shoes and see how you work through this, and it's not easy. I don't know if I can do it, but again, I congratulate you on doing so. I'd like to congratulate Lori on the work y'all, you and your staff have put into it, and we appreciate you greatly here in Macon County. We're happy to have you with us. Finally, I'd like to thank the board members that I served with. When I, we started out our budget meetings, I guess it was last week, two weeks ago, I mentioned kind of the history of taxes and how much, there's probably not a greater term that's caused more problems in our country's history than the idea of taxes and how they're spent and how budgets are made. I appreciate y'all. I appreciate y'all being able to come to a consensus on a lot of these items via respectful, understanding behavior and civil discourse. I think that's great. Something else that's great is, I don't think it'd be good if this board, would it be good if we could all vote on the budget? Yes. But I don't think it's good that we all agree on one hundred percent of everything with the budget. I don't think we'd be doing our county and the taxpayers justification if we came up here and all exactly had the same opinions. That, that wouldn't be good. And that's why we have a five-member board, and we're here for varying opinions and to express those and try and bend it. Am I personally one hundred percent happy with the budget? No, I'd love to flip you, uh, flip a few of those numbers around, but I'm gonna vote for it tonight because I feel like it's the best option we have for it to move this county forward, so. With that being said, again, I congratulate Derek, Lori. I appreciate y'all very much. I enjoy serving with all y'all. So, thank you. Go ahead.
One comment to counter Commissioner Bell. I don't always use the term progressive, but I don't want to consider my part on this board as being a progressive board member. I ran as a conservative board. I don't know if that was a political or a financial statement, but I do want to clarify that I hope this board is considered to be a conservative unit as opposed to a progressive unit.
Well, I'll start to count that. Progressive, Paul, if you look at it, it mean, what that means is progressive means you move forward in, in the best light that you can with what money you have. Conservative means, I don't know what it means in your mind. If you look up the definition of it, it ain't what you think it is. So, uh, but progressive means you, you always moving forward, you're not, but backing up. And when you, if you stand still, you're backing up in, in, in anything, business, whatever you're doing, so that's what that means.
Civil discourse.
Clarification.
That's right. Is there anybody else that'd like to say anything in regards to the budget? About the chair on the table to approve the budget ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make a motion to approve the budget ordinance as presented. With the amount, I don't have that in front of me, but it, the budget ordinance will be in the amount of forty-nine million, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. I'll make that motion for the fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Motion on the floor, give a second.
Sir.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, so you can probably say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Aye.
Mr. Deck, let the record reflect a three to two vote with Commissioners Higdon and Glasby voting aye. Next item on the agenda, item eleven F, mental health. Resolution.
Speaking of not providing the money for the citizens, this is a resolution to support for adequate funding to meet the mental health. The legislature continues to decrease the monies for mental health, and this is just a general resolution that we would like to send down. I've talked to Representative Corbin about this, and of course, the House did a great job in, in their budget. We don't know exactly, it's like talking with a school, we don't know where it's gonna land as far as the money being cut, but it is gonna have some cuts. And it really affects the rural counties the worst. If you read the ordinance that I passed last night, passed out to you, uh, this is the same general language that was presented to other counties. But it really affects us rural counties before they get west because we just don't have the services available. We have more, more Macon County than most. I mean, we have a walk-in center. We have some things that are really wonderful. And we have another mental health task force meeting this coming Thursday, and, but the numbers continue to grow for substance abuse and the monies. And so if these monies were cut back, it, it really, you know, we have our main provider as Appalachian, and they've had to partner now with a group from Virginia to get funding, to keep Appalachian up and going. So it's really important for our rural counties, especially those of us out west, that, that we try to keep this five million dollars over a twenty-three county area who really affects, you get into some of these counties, and some of these counties can afford it much better than us and the counties further west than us. So I would ask for support of, of the resolution that we pass on to, to our legislators in, in Raleigh, the Senate and the House, and ask for your support and asking them to please limit the cuts as much as it can and, and not make them reoccurring. We need, if you read it, there's so many needs out here. It affects every family as far as however you wanna, however you wanna look. I have the opportunity to work with a lot of these folks every day, so. So it's, it's very important that, and you gotta have people, we have, we're really struggling keeping clinicians. They get their two-year degree and they're gone from this area for a lot of different reasons, so we're trying to put some money into that. Some money goes to our health department, for the substance abuse, for, for unborn and pregnancies. It's not that young, it's not that baby's fault. Don't penalize that baby, but if you treat that mother, you treat that baby. There's some monies that's, we, we push for, we hope to get this month, but with these cuts coming up, it's a huge cut, and it's reoccurring money cut. And uh, we, it was really a surprise that it's this amount of money, so I, long story short, I'd ask for your support and resolution. I put that in form of a motion that we support the resolution off support that in what it says, to provide adequate funding for the mental health, intellectual, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse disorders needs for the citizens of Macon County.
We have a motion on the floor, so, in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I spoke with, I looked at this, appreciate you giving us a little heads up on this, Ronnie. I spoke with Jim Davis today, just to, when we start passing resolutions encouraging the state to change their budget without knowing the full package, it's sometimes, I, I won't do it. But Jim, and, and it struck me, and he didn't have an opportunity to come tonight. He said he'd love to come and address the full board, but what his logic was, he said these L and Es had an excessive fund balance, and this was a move simply in the reduction, they reduced, I think, a hundred million dollars, Ronnie?
Some of them had an excessive fund balance. We did not.
Yeah. In general, was what he's saying. He didn't protect.
One element, they chose one element which was totally mis-run, and, and that's fine. They're penalizing everybody, Paul, was the problem.
He said, you know, out of a billion dollars of previous funding, they cut it a hundred million, that dropped the overall fund balance forty million dollars. And what the Senate was looking to do was to encourage these folks not to set on fund balances, but to inject that into the communities to serve the purposes that you delineated here.
I wish Senator Davis was here, not for this.
And he said, yeah, you can vote to send this resolution, but he said it's way, way past that in the budget process or in the negotiation process, so, you know.
And this has an impact when you get eighty counties that we're hoping, we've got sixty-two so far. We're hoping eighty counties will really have an impact, so.
And I wanna, after this action on this particular item, I'd like to tag on something on mental health after we have action on this, but, you know, I don't, you know, for us to come in here and say, hey, we're a board here in Macon County, we don't approve of the way you're doing your funding or your funding cuts or anything in Raleigh without knowing the full scope of things, I think it's a little free material for us to collectively say, we don't like the way you're running the camp, the, the state down there. We send them down there to do their job.
Well, we don't. I know. That's what I'm saying.
So, that's my, that's my opinion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, so you can probably say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Board one, Mr. Deck. Item eleven G.
That'd be forward on.
Nacquasi Initiative. Commissioner Bell? Nope, sorry.
This is Mr. Tommy Jenkins. He's an economic velter, and uh, he's gonna talk to us about the Nacquasi Initiative. I passed this out last night. We are one of the, who's involved in this, is, and we would, we hope, I did pass this out to the commissioners last night, Tommy.
Okay.
Give your information, so they, they've had a chance to look it over. And uh, the Nacquasi Initiative has, as you can see, began a little bit way before the two thirteen seventeen date, and, and so Tommy's gonna give us an update on that and, and what that means.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, happy to be here this evening. The Nacquasi Initiative grew out of a group called Mountain Partners, which was an effort started last year, the beginning of last year to bring together groups from Easter Band, Cherokee, Indian, the town of Franklin, Macon County, other groups such as Main Spring to start looking how we could partner to, to, number one, improve relationships between all those groups. Number two was to look at opportunities for economic growth within the region. So, the Nacquasi Initiative grew out of this particularly for the land around the Indian mound with the thought that it would be a collaborative venture to improve the mound, the area of that town down there that Main Springs, Main Spring is already working on. And also to leverage opportunities that might benefit such areas as the Greenway, the Cherokee corridor, which is a, is a concept that runs from Georgia line all the way to Cherokee, pretty much along the river with several historic sites along, along that corridor. It's a, you know, it's, it's, it's a good project. We've got some dedicated folks to it. I think if you look along that corridor, there's been something to the tune of about thirty million dollars spent in the last twenty or twenty-five years along through there for things such as the Nacquasi mound, of course, uh, the Needmore Track, Hall Mountain, West Mill, and other such things as that. So the idea behind the Nacquasi Initiative is to promote those, look at ways we can build that into sort of an economic development engine for tourism growth and other future projects. Like I say, you know, this, this is a springboard to leverage future projects. The, the initial efforts are for around the Nacquasi mound, Danzato, the old Simpson oil track and all those. There's four partners, actually, there's Main Spring, town of Franklin, Macon County, of which I was, I guess, asked to be on the board, or the board for that. And also Main Springs, so. I think, I don't know if you discussed the, uh, the ask, Ronnie. We're asking for twelve thousand five hundred. The town has already committed to theirs. The Eastern Band is, along the way, they're, they're making good progress. We anticipate their commitment, and of course, Main Spring is already over that amount with, with their contributions, so. That's pretty much it.
Private investors is more down to any reason?
Well, we don't have any private investors at this time. We'd love to have some, but, uh, yeah, there'll be, yeah, part of this effort is for fundraising also, so we'll be developing a strategic plan to, to, to grow this project. Anyway, I think it's a great project. Number one, it brings several partners together that could promote not only the town, but the county and the whole region. And actually, twelve thousand buy-in for initials, for startup is pretty reasonable considering the amount that's already been spent in this area.
And, you know, you're getting that, the, the sentence is, is in progress and it's, it's gonna be?
There's several things in process that we could have some major funding within the next, next hundred and twenty days or so, so.
And the, the reason that we've come tonight in this fiscal year and that's for it is because the funding cycle is about to begin, and if we don't show an entrance as a county, then opportunities for us to get any money, and I think we had them listed back there, Tommy. The opportunities, if the town came along fine and, and, and one either thinks, seems to think that the, the Eastern Band will too, because they also realize that if you don't show an entrance and, and you're talking a lot of money, but if that entrance is not shown, then you will not be a part even, even considered.
Potential vendors have to have some buy-in, have to show some buy-in.
And, and for the amount of money that, that's gonna be requested, uh, for a lot, for the whole area down there, and it would, I just think it'd be a great enhancement. I've always thought that, and I think all of us have, that that, when you enter, that is the entrance to the, to the town, which is a part of the county, and I think would, for that much investment for what it can bring, and it's, and, and to be honest, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be an overnight thing, Tommy.
No, no, it's a long, it's a long-term project.
It's a long haul and it, but it's come, it's come a lot faster quicker than ever anticipated, obviously.
The last thirty days have really accelerated.
They've been a lot of changes, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring this to the board tonight. And it's, uh, it's an investment, is what it is. It's an investment. We're partnering with the town and with, with Main Spring and these other folks to enhance part of our county.
Well, and it al, it also does, uh, it also presents the opportunity in the future to leverage the Greenway for improvements also. Some of these projects could, could involve the Greenway and enhance it.
Why was this included in the budget? Let me hear what we just voted in.
We come, we come a little late. We come late to the party.
We just voted on adopting the budget, the first thing out of the egg, we're looking for a good amount of budget.
We come, we come late to the party with this. We didn't know that it was going to, everything, the last thirty days have, have evolved much quicker than anybody anticipated to add to the budget.
But we could have added the budget last night.
Well, we had it, but we also.
This is gonna come out of current year's budget. It'll come out of current year's budget.
Yeah, current year's budget.
Out of budget spending, out of.
No. Out of this year's budget.
Yeah, but it was not budgeting this year's spending or last year's either.
No, this is, we'd be asking for this out of the contingency of this year.
Out of emergency contingency.
Out of contingency.
Is this an annual thing or is this just one time?
No, that's just one time I ask.
Lori, can you give us the balance? How we discuss this?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
I'm looking at the estimated investment to date numbers.
Right.
I just, I don't see Macon County, I'm not sure, Macon County.
Oh, no, Macon County, we didn't include Macon County. I did not put these figures together, but if you include, the Greenway project's actually in there, I think, in investments. There's some other things such as Cowie School and, and that project that have not been included in the spending to date, so. That's just an example to show how much money has been spent.
So county, county does have money in.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, the county is, the county's heavily invested in it.
And how much? Ten thousand?
Twelve five.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twelve five.
Twelve five.
Twelve five.
And, and where did the twelve five come from? Are we matching?
That's, that's what it takes. The estimate is what it would take if everybody contributed. If the town, that's why the town of Franklin contributed. That's what, if, if we, if we get the votes to contribute, the Eastern Band will contribute. Now, Main Spring has already contributed.
Right.
And so with that much money, that's, that's what it will take, that much money for them to go in to get for the grant stock.
Right, right.
Twelve five on all each party.
Twelve five on each partner. Fifty thousand's the total initiative project.
They're trying to get seed. You have to show the seed money and show that you've got skin in the game where we don't, they won't pay much attention to you.
And everybody's in except for the Eastern Band, and you feel like they wouldn't.
Right. And I think they're, I think they're coming along too. We've had some, we hadn't had any discussions, but Juanita's had discussion with the new administration. This is really the, the Mountain Partner thing and the Nacquasi Initiative, I think, have really been a good thing, building bridges between these various parts.
We've had some great representatives from the county. Gary Deals has done a good job. A lot of folks have done a wonderful job representing the county in that. And so they've done it. And, and if we can get that, and so, yeah, I think you'll be hearing real soon about some announcements. We hope, we can't, we let them, that's their announcement, not ours.
That's right.
Any further discussion, Mark?
Yeah, anything to add, Dr. Tommy?
Nope, I don't think I'm, I don't say that.
Mr. Chairman, I would put in form of a motion that we invest into the Nacquasi Initiative for the amount of twelve thousand five hundred. And Lori will, since she already has her end of the year stuff, that will be taken out of contingency in.
Which is in the non-departmental.
In the non-departmental.
I'll move it to another line in my department also that doesn't affect what's all previously approved.
And then Tommy will, if approved, the county manager and Mr. Jenkins will see that, that money is, is put forth when, when the town of Franklin, I think they've done submitted their, their money.
They did cut it by June thirty for it to come out of this budget.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not picking on you, Tommy. I'm pretty sure what you did. This is, I'm a founding member of the Mantrust of Little Tennessee now, Main Spring. I support quite a bit of that. It is a worthy undertaking. I understand what a lot of these numbers, farmers involved in a lot of this stuff. It's just a simple thing of how do we fund these things, you know? Here we are at the end of the year. This is a, this is a nonprofit five oh one C three, just like Cowie School. We established a community funding pool a few years back to address funding nonprofits.
Right.
I have no problem with this if it's submitted to the same scrutiny that the community funding pool designed to handle funding to nonprofits and charitable organizations. I have no problem with this funding. For us, but for us as a board to step outside the authority of that fund, community funding pool committee, and just pick and choose nonprofits to fund is usurps the concept of a community funding pool. I just, I can't, I just think this is, and then just to sit here and say, hey, we're going, we're going to do this with that whole lot of logic, you know, a lot of, it's nothing, I appreciate it. It's a worthy project. It's just how do we fund these things?
Anything further?
See now, at the end of June, your contingency money, what you have left, what, what happens to that?
Goes into fund balance.
Goes back in the fund balance, not next year's contingency.
No, it goes into fund balance.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Am I still up?
Oh, yeah.
You are.
Precision lease agreement. Maybe one-year lease looks like?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a unique opportunity, I think, with, with a space in the Business Development Center. Of course, you know Harmony House moved out to an early location, Industrial Park. And it left our unit A, which is our largest unit, open. I was approached by actually a local couple, a young couple, Jeremy and Laura Brooks. And Laura's mother is Mary Gabriels who works for a coward. I don't know if you know them. But they are involved with a company called Innovateks, which is a manufacturer, clothing line manufacturer. They source from major department stores. They're owned by a gentleman out of China. But they have a presence in the United States and Europe. They've got their current warehouse in Charlotte, and their office down there. What, what Laura, how Laura and Jeremy come into it is they, they've developed their own clothing line, which is militia.
Did you say?
Militia.
Oh, okay.
Mulecia, like a mule. And as you can see, it's a pretty much a.
Did you get one?
Up here, here. I'm sorry. It's, it's a, it's a, pretty much a, a younger demographic clothing line. But they're real excited about it. What this would do, we would be providing warehouse and distribution space for them. Jeremy and Laura have moved back to Franklin to run this business. They would also, they would be distributing militia plus their other lines for Innovateks, which sources to department stores. It's a, I think it's a good opportunity. I think it's a good opportunity for a couple of young entrepreneurs to grow business in Macon County. And possibly, you know, this Business Development Center is a crapshoot, but you know.
I have a Macon bill.
Yeah, sounds like, sounds like a good project for them. We started them out at a rate of three dollars a square foot, which we've actually increased our rate from two dollars a square foot in the past. So it's for a one-year lease. And of course, we try to run on three-year program where at the end of every year, we review their progress and sign, sign them up again for another year. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions.
Good job. Chairman, I had prepared a couple of documents. First is a precision lease agreement. When we ended our arrangement with Harmony House, there's nothing that really memorialized that that really probably should be. And so I would recommend that you authorize the execution of the precision agreement with respect to the resolution that was passed out. That would be to declare this property surplus and approve one-year lease to the company. And I want to thank Lori for bringing to my attention a typographical error on the first page of the resolution where July fourteenth is referenced. That should read June fourteenth, and I will make that correction.
I didn't catch it. I apologize.
No, that's, you count on Lori to be our expert.
I'll see if, I'll see if I can make some of these available for the commissioners.
I want a T-shirt.
Say you pick one up for about eighty bucks.
Eighty bucks for a T-shirt?
What Tommy started for rent. They got other things on that. Good job, Tommy.
Thank you.
Motion to approve? Motion whatever?
Do we need to rescind the lease agreement first?
I would approve the precision lease agreement first and then adopt the resolution with change that I mentioned.
Okay. Let's take a motion to rescind the lease agreement.
So move.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got a motion to approve the resolution, approving the one-year lease.
So move with the change that I mentioned.
The change that county attorney recommended. We got a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's different.
Yeah, there's different.
You gave us the discount model, eh? Juanita was getting all them out.
So are they, do they sell just strictly on the internet?
No, they actually, Innovateks does, actually, they have sales reps. And militia will be sort of piggybacking on them with their sales reps and going to shows, different, outdoor, outdoor recreation show out in South Lake City, different trade shows.
Are they just slick or are they various?
I don't know if they got it in our size, Ronnie.
They don't got a full man size.
All right.
Okay.
But you can't go after a bike.
No, no.
It's all new business. Move on to consent agenda.
We did. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry to stand up for a little bit, man.
We've had a chance to review the past minutes and the budget amendments and the tax releases. If there's anything any of y'all would like to have removed, we'll do so. Further discussion, if not, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Appointments. We have two seats on the planning board. Planning board, I think, Mr. Putral from Highlands. As time has expired, he's served his two terms, and the other one is a reappointment. It looks like Mr. Laster has reappointed himself as liaison.
But this, we, we would like to move forward with the reappointment of Mr. Blaster with the other position being advertised and see if we can get some, some additional interest in that. So.
That, that position, from my understanding, Jack Grubron, is a traditional, it's a Highlands position, correct? We tried to traditionally keep somebody.
We were trying our best to get someone from Highlands.
I will speak.
Kind of he is completely up, man.
Two terms.
Two terms, his terms. He'd be the good.
So, Jack, I think it, my understanding is, is until we find someone, he can still serve. And ask, if you don't mind, if you'll ask him and just say if you will, I'll go ahead and mention it to the Highlands Town Board and the mayor up there and see if, get somebody from there to serve.
So which place you are, so you have to motion for Mr. Matt?
I would make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Blaster.
Second.
To another.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
I haven't heard of any reason for a closed session.
No, sir.
Is there any reason to recess?
Yeah.
I would like, just one more. Just one more quick item I just thought of. Derek, if you don't mind following up on a, I think it's our turn to host a joint meeting with the two towns. If you could follow up and set that maybe for mid-July. Does that work with everyone?
I was thinking, after August. I was thinking about that today and if we were, we do it shoot for early fall, August, set people habit in the gym of the renovated.
Robert C. Carpe.
Oh, Robert C. Carpe.
Yeah.
That can be complete.
If you can just get that ball, ball and ball rolling, that would be good.
Mr. Chairman, a little one-on-one out there? Little one-on-one in the gym?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you?
I don't want to sound like an issue, but if you want to give a report or a meeting, yes.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, we will give you this report. The chairman, myself, and the county manager did meet along with some citizens and folks from Operation.
Heartbeat two, I think it is.
With Dr. Paulson from Mission Hospital yesterday and, and some other representatives from Mission. Had a very lively discussion for one hour exactly. And, and so, and at the end of the day, it certainly appears that labor and delivery is going to be leaving Macon County. But what we came out of that meeting, I think I expect the chairman on this, is, is the dedication of the folks of this community and their commitment to, to always keep in Macon County. And even Dr. Paulson said that it, and I think it's, I think it's going to be both well moving forward in our hospital. Becomes the involvement of the citizens and, and of this board and of the town board. So, but I do think at the end of the day that, that that hospital is, that that service is, is probably, with chairman, whatever you think, and Derek, whatever you think, but that, that service is going to be leaving. And hopefully that one day it'll be restored, as we said yesterday. But, but the positive thing of it was dedication of the, of the citizens that was around that table and many more citizens of this community, what they brought to the table. And, and I think it'll have a positive impact moving forward. It may take a while. It may take a few months, two years. But I think it'll have a positive impact for our community and our hospital as we move forward. Mr. Chairman, if you want to comment on that.
No, I think you hit the nail on the head. Unless there's just some sort of, the way I saw it is unless there's just some sort of great massive funding that comes to the county to supplement labor deliveries, just really no hope unfortunately. It's a sad, sad situation. But I, we have been exploring avenues and racking our brains on how to make this work.
At least we're moving our hospital like blue.
Very true. Very true.
And it's, and if we move forward in the future, there's, there are some good things maybe that, if you look at the silver line, hopefully there's a silver line. If we can find it, we'll keep looking.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman. A motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.